Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Dawson County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Today is September 19th, 2019. We do appreciate your attendance. We'll get right into the new business. First up, we have a presentation of requests for memorandum of understanding with Lunkin County concerning emergency radio use. Emergency Services Director Danny Compton. Danny?
Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, Commissioners. About two weeks ago, Chief Wimpy from Lunkin County had approached me. They recently purchased about 10 new radios and were trying to get them programmed. And at that point, they reached out to the vendor, same vendor that we use here, Mobile Con Communications. And at that point, basically, Mobile Con told them, well, you all have an MOU with Dawson County for us to be able to put the frequencies in there. So they provided them with standard MOU language. I've read through it. I didn't really see anything that was any different than any of our other MOUs or radio frequencies that we currently have with both Mid Canoe, Cherokee, and some of the others. So with that, really, this is a reciprocal agreement because obviously, we're going to give them the same term. They're giving us the ability so as we buy new radios and need the Lunkin frequency, we can program the Lunkin frequency in. It's really pretty much a straightforward agreement as far as that. I'll answer any questions, but that's the context behind it.
Questions for Danny?
Any reason or label to look at?
Well, I haven't looked at it.
Okay.
Maybe they can look at it between now and the voting session?
Sure.
There's only really about eight bullet points. And when we break, Ms. Davis will be more happy to just kind of discuss them if you need to.
Yeah, let's do that.
The reason for we keep it is because they own that frequency. We own ours. By federal government, you get so many frequencies. We got ours, they got theirs. So to use somebody else, you gotta get permission. Is that right?
That is the basic context behind it. And they use it. When we go to Lunkin County and we swap over to their frequency, we talk on their channel, vice versa. When they come to us, they talk on our channel, they operate on our channel. Just really helps with the continuity of communications out there.
Who can be the principal contacts?
The principal contact for Dawson County, the principal contact would be me, the chief, and then over there, it would be Chief Wimpy from Lunkin.
Other questions for Danny? Thanks, sir. If legal, if you'll take a look at that.
Yes, sir.
That'd be great. Next up, we have a presentation of FY 2020 Legacy Link Contract for Nutrition Program Services Addendum Number One. Senior Services Director Dawn Prue at Dawn's. Looks like they want to give us some money.
It is. Good afternoon, Chairman.
We don't want it, we're not gonna take it. Hey, next time, they maybe want to take some away from us. But this is Legacy Link Addendum Number One for FY 2020, which we just started on July the 1st. They're going to give us an increase of $8,228 that will go toward their senior client bill program. I would like to ask for you to approve it if you can to ratify this later on tonight at the Board of Commissioner meeting so we can get this turned in as soon as possible.
Probably add that to the agenda for six o'clock. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Dawn? She always brings us those good money things.
I'd say dirt moving.
We have this.
Got dirt moving, got concrete asphalt coming up out there. And if you've been out there this week, if you go down into their area, it's just, have you been down there, Billy? It's just made, I mean, sort of like a little valley, and then it comes up on the sides. Major progress going on. Very pleased, of course, it is dry out there.
Okay. Any other questions for Dawn?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have a presentation of 2020 Copyer Replacement Request, Purchasing Manager Melissa Hall. Melissa?
Yeah, Community Commissioner Tierney. I'm coming to you today to talk to you about the remaining 2011 copiers. In 2018, this was brought to you, and it was decided by the Commission to replace 17 and get one new additional copier. And I'm not going to read through everything that we did yet last year, but this is just a little bit of the background that we accomplished last year. And we did replace 17 of those with Canon, and we did duplicating products because they were the lowest as far as the cost of the copier and for the cost per copy maintenance charges. And it was decided at that time in 2018 to come back toward the 2020 budget to do the next 17. This is a list of the ones that were replaced in 27, I'm sorry, 2019, just for your remembrance. And this is the list for 2020. There is a copier that is not on this particular list, and that is the one that's over at the Law Enforcement Center at the Sheriff's Office. That's because in November 2016, it had to be replaced, and they had to purchase it out of their small equipment budget. The one from 2011 had just completely died, and they had to go ahead and have one replaced. Duplicating Products Technicians and Dean Snyder walked around with Robin from our IT, and they looked at that machine and decided that it could have up to three to four years of life, possibly more than, more likely to, or three years. So they have asked that we ask you guys to let them hold on to that for another two or three years.
Does it cost too much in repairs?
They had no real issues at all since 2016. So November, it'll be three years old. And they do expect anywhere from two to four years of life for that one. So this is going to be the cost for the replacement for the 2020. At the bottom, bottom total, the first total is for the 54 or 168. That's if it's opted to replace all of them, including the Law Enforcement Center. If the Law Enforcement Center is not replaced, it will be $50,208. Now for disposable, disposable of the current copiers, I added as what you guys voted on last year, and that was where we got pricing for purchase from Shiva exports through duplicating products. For our current machines, they offered us $330. I know that don't seem like a whole lot, but I do have a comparison of what we got for the same type of machines last year, and it's about half of what we got last year. I did do telephone inquiries to other wholesalers, and they had absolutely no interest in these 2525s because there's really no life left in them. Good Deals was not really a good option because we had no place in the county to hold these machines. We would actually have to rent a storage facility to hold the machines until we possibly could get them sold on Good Dot Deals. So Duplicating Products last year agreed to do as they did last year for this coming year, and they will take them out as they're replaced. They will destroy the hard drives, they will store them until they're all on site, until the Shiva can come and pick them up for us at all, no cost. This is what the estimated purchase price will be. As you see there, I have what they paid for the same machine last year and what they're giving us this year, and it's literally cut in half. It's 330 now, but those same machines were 660 last year. Duplicating Products has given us a different price for the Law Enforcement Center if we decide to sell that. Shiva gave us $15, but Duplicating Products said 600. And yes, I did ask them, did they want to buy the other 2525s, and they had no interest again because there's really no value in them. So with that being said, staff recommends that we do go back and use the DOAS statewide contract for the cost per copy maintenance, and that we replace the remaining 2011, and for the board to decide whether they want to hold the LA City copier, the Law Enforcement Center copier, or go ahead and replace it this year. And then once y'all decide that, if y'all will vote to fit this on the capital budget for 2020. And while I have your attention, if it pleases the board, I kind of want to update you a little bit on CAD, that project that has been going on since May. We are now in the last final phases for the CAD update. There have been only one change order right now, and that was at no cost. There will possibly be two more coming there for two more mobile units and licensing, which is about $1,200. And then there's going to be a data conversion that was not in the original bid. So total, that's just right about $15,000. With us working very hard through IT, with Dale themselves, and with Caliber, myself, and Alicia, we were able to save $67,000 on that project. So there's a good possibility that about $52,000 will come back, which is at the right time since we've got this one coming up. So I just kind of wanted to update y'all on that CAD because we are almost at the end of that.
Questions for Melissa? Thank you, ma'am.
The Sheriff's Office is satisfied with their copier?
Yes, ma'am. They've got no issues with it. The only thing that they ask, which you can't blame me here, is when time comes for that to be replaced, that the board takes that into consideration on just their general supply budget. I mean, their small equipment budget, that's where that comes from. But it's not a $5,000, so it's not capital. It's just around $3,900. So that would be a small equipment purchase, and they just ask that y'all take that into consideration in the future years when they come back for budget.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up, we have discussion of impact fees. Planning and Development Director Jameson Kinley, and I think you're also going to talk about the capital improvement element as a part of this and kind of get two birds with one stone.
Thank you, Chairman. Absolutely. And they do kind of, they're tied at the hip because when we look at impact fees, our capital improvement element and what we spend those impact fees are on are as important to take a look at as the impact fees themselves and how it's licensed. Impact fees in this document are defined as charges levied by local governments on new developments in order to pay proportionate share of capital costs provided public infrastructure on those developments. So basically, it's potential revenue for new public facilities. We spend those on four different items. We spend that on library services, parks and rec, fire protection, law enforcement, and road improvements. We also, I mean, we also use SLOs dollars, general fund, and other grant funds for those. So impact fees aren't the only thing that we use for these line items, and that's why you see the percentage numbers on this short-term work program. But in general, eligible facilities for impact fees are to pay for capital items that have a life expectancy of 10 years or more. And those include land, buildings, other facilities, and what they call major rolling stock, which are fire trucks essentially. Currently, we have, in our library funds, we have $164,000. In our parks and rec, we have $521,000. In fire, we only have $68,000, and that's because our only purchases this year from impact fee funds has been $122,000 for a fire truck. In roads, we have $105,000, and the rest is in admin and CIE, which is roughly $29,000. Since we re-implemented collecting impact fees in August of last year, we have collected, well, obviously, we've collected that much. It was August 17th when my department started collecting impact fees on residential and commercial building permits in the county. On March 21st is when we reduced fire and roads collections down to 25%. That had, that had an impact on both residential and commercial, residential not as much as commercial. Between August and March before we reduced it, we collected, as far as residential, we collected $604,321 in residential impact fees. On the commercial side, we collected $70,774 in impact fees. But an important thing to point out in those notes is that we collect a lot more for new construction as opposed to a building that's already there that's just a build out that is changing hands. During that time, we had Olive Garden, we had Dawsonville Self-Storage, we had Wendy's and Dollar Tree, which made up the majority of those, of that $70,000. In March, since March, we've collected residential, we've only collected $331,119, which is, which is a pretty significant amount as compared to the number of permits that we got allocated during that period. For commercial, we collected $4,600 roughly, and those included only one new build out, which was Chipotle, but we had a lot of new commercial coming into the county that were essentially just build outs of their current suites, like Biosize and Honey Chain and other such new businesses. But what I want to point out in the capital improvement element, it's, on page three, this is the updated, these numbers are directly from all the numbers from 2018. This is a document that we produce to DCA every year as an update, which needs to go for a public hearing. So these numbers aren't accurate, as accurate as the numbers I just gave you, but they were just for the numbers of 2018. The important things to look at start with page eight, and is our short-term work program. Now, these are the things that we can spend impact fees on. These are things like our fire station, and our fire hydrants, and our road projects that we have going on in the county. And these are the estimated timelines and periods at which we would probably use impact fees towards those projects. I'll entertain any questions at the time.
Question for Jameson.
Jameson, how much would we have received? You may not have this, so you could just email it to us or whatever, if we had not lowered those fees.
On the commercial side, I can tell you it would have been roughly $18,000.
We would have received $18,000 or more?
$18,000 more. That, that's roughly, you know, lowering it to the 25%.
So lowering those fees really didn't affect and bring all this growth in? I mean, it's not that big a difference, is it?
It's really hard to tell, only because it's a very seasonal, planning development's a long-term game. It's not a short snapshot of what we're looking at. You have to kind of look at it in the big picture, and really, six months is a really large period of time to see those trends. So I really can't make a judgment call based on such a short amount of time.
Other questions for Jameson? So we need to put this on as a public hearing for the CIE?
Yes.
For two weeks?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation of FY 2020 Board of Commissioners Meeting Schedule. County Clerk Kristi Cloud.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You all have the proposed schedule for next week and package. If you have any questions or proposed changes, please let me know.
Any questions for Kristi? Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Next up, we have a presentation of Board Appointments. Department of Family and Children's Services has been Nancy Stites' reappointment term September 2019 through June 2024. I don't think I have to tell you how good of a job Ms. Stites does and what she does for the county and the citizens of this county, and so I would make that recommendation to you. Next up, we have the presentation of the proposed 2020 budget, which I'm going to do. So I will go down here, so I can click to click. First off, let me thank all of the Commissioners for your participation in our open public meetings that we had when we were working through the budget proposal. I appreciate your attendance in that. Let me thank staff and our county manager and all the elected officials for all of their hard work in preparation and being prepared when they came to the board. So we had some very good presentations this year, and they had done an excellent job of working through those and basically presenting needs, not wants. And so we're very proud of our staff and so, and our elected officials and the hard work that they put into the preparations that they made. As you well know, we have many, many challenges in our county that we're trying to address when it comes to budget. But we'll, our goal was to prepare a realistic revenue-based budget. Obviously, we are required by law to have a balanced budget. Our budget conforms to our reduced mileage rate. As you know, we voted to reduce the mileage rate from 8.138 to 8.089. Wasn't a huge savings for our citizens, but it was a step in the right direction, and hopefully, we can continue to move in that direction. But in the essence of that, we also wanted to provide the same or an improved level of service, you know, for our citizens, and provide the departments with the proper funding to be able to do that. And as we said before, all of our departments and agencies had the opportunity to come to the board, present their request to the entire board who was able to come during our public hearings, as well as the public having the opportunity to attend those hearings as well. What were some of our challenges that we looked at as we went into the 2020 budget? We had increases in salary costs from the prior year as a result of a previous salary study. The board is well aware, and the citizens should be as well, we're looking at another salary study right now that's in process. And that salary study with the mid-year increases that the board approved in public safety was about a 5.8% countywide increase. That increase was $1,243,006. That was primarily in public safety. As you know, we voted to work with our public safety agencies, try to stop the exodus that we had seen of employees over the past several months. If you remember, we granted a 10% increase to paramedic firefighters and a 5% to firefighter EMTs. Sheriff's Office did the same, granted a 10% increase to their mandated staff and a 5% to their unmandated staff. We saw an increase in health insurance costs, and then, of course, we always have increased operational needs from multiple departments. The board is well aware, and the citizens are well aware, we are in the very much process of opening up two brand-new facilities that will come online probably the latter part of this year, much-needed facilities, the new public works facility and the fleet maintenance shop. I have made it well-known, and wherever I've been, that we have to have a better maintenance shop for our people to work out of because I'm ashamed of the one we've been putting them in. And so at the end of this year, we will put them in a state-of-the-art shop that allows them to do their job, make them more efficient and a lot more productive, as well as our public works people, all in the same place, which we'll do the same for them as well. We're looking forward to that happen. But with that, also came some extra costs. As you know, both of those were SLOs projects, SLOs six projects, and the improvements that we have seen in the economy that has helped us in areas such as low block and sales tax and SLOs, well, it has also been a deterrent when it comes to the bids that we got in in reference to those facilities. Steel went up, concrete went up, so the cost went up. So we had to make some adjustments to get those facilities done and online, but that's going very well, and I want to thank David McKee and all those people, Ms. Vicki and her staff, all the people who've worked on our SLOs projects to make that a go. General Fund is obviously our main operating fund of the county. All the property tax that the county receives goes into the General Fund. Property tax provides about 39.42% of the revenue of the General Fund. So other things, as you can see here, aren't working. The local option sales tax, the service fees that we charge for different things that bring in revenue. This board has done a very good job of looking at alternative methods to bring in revenue other than property tax. And so that is working, as you can see, 39.4%, or 2% is, comes from property tax. Where do we start at when we start? General Fund requests that we got from staff and elected officials tallied up to $31,802.167. Our original budget in 2019 was $27,170,000 plus. That represents about a $4.6 million increase. Now, a lot of that is in the $2.1 million new personnel and salary change request that came before the board and the board granted. We saw several changes in our insurance and our personnel when we went through the mid-year revision, when we did our new insurance, the cost was $47,000. But then, as we've had changes with staff and personnel, you know, then you have differences. Obviously, some people who might have had single covers now was replaced with an employee who has family coverage. Then we have some opens, obviously, that we have to budget for those at the maximum because we do not know what that particular new employee that we might get in the future is going to have, whether they be single, whether they be one-plus-one, or whether they be family. So we have to budget the maximum for that. You also know that we've made some changes to the 2019 budget throughout the year. We've added some fire trucks, we added the CAD system, we added several other items throughout the year that totaled about $1.9 million that we used some fund balance for. We'll talk a little bit more about fund balance here in a minute, but so now we're looking at $29,331,985 if every department spent every penny of what they've been allocating. You're also well aware that they do a really good job of managing their budgets, and even though we made budget a healthy sum, a lot of times in fund balance, a lot of times, we don't use any fund balance even though we have budgeted because the staff and the elected officials do such a good job of managing their budgets and bringing those in under Revenue changes that we've seen, projections for loss to increase 8% from actual in 2018, which equates to an increase of almost $500,000 in the 2020 budget compared to '18. Now, here we talk about fund balance. We are proposing in this budget to include the use of fund balance of $2,524,978. That looks like a big number, but we finished 2018 with an $8.2 million unassigned fund balance. So we have a healthy fund balance. And we'll talk about some of the things that made a difference in asking for that amount of money. Obviously, like I said, we did the salary increases that we allowed, we got the new facilities that are coming on, and there was some equipment that we weren't able to purchase. With maybe one-time purchase, some of this stuff will be that we're looking at, and so those will be the one-time things that will not come back up again. Here's the revenues that you have to work with, obviously, property taxes, the local option sales tax, the other taxes, licenses and permits, intergovernmental revenues, charges for services, fines and forfeitures. You'll see the comparison for 2020 and 2019 and the percentage of change that the board and her staff have prepared for you. And you'll see what the proposed budget is for 2020 there. And the number you see in 2019 obviously was the approved budget at the beginning, and like I said, we've made some changes to that, as you're well aware, throughout the year. This is just a pie chart of the very same thing. It shows you the percentages of where revenue comes from. These are the expenditures by function. When we say function, general government, which would include Board of Commissioners, county manager, finance, HR, all the things that pretty much are located here in this facility. And you have judicial. Then, you have judicial, sheriff's office, public safety, which is the fire EMA and the quarters office, public works, health and welfare, culture and recreation, housing and development, and then other financing uses where we look at things such as risk management, different things of those nature. Next up, we have a...just a general breakdown of every department, what they're being...what I'm proposing for those particular departments. And it's broke down the same way. We start out with general government, and you will see all the different things that fall under what's classified as general government. And you'll see the difference between the 19 adopted budget, obviously, and the 2020 recommended, and the percentage of change, and the dollar amount for that percentage of change. Next up, we have the judicial. All of our court services are in judicial. And you'll see the 2020 budget there for each department, as well as the 2019 and the change that's associated with what's being where amended. Public safety, this is one you're going to see the most change in because this is the one that we've done the most work in in reference to salaries and things and adjustments that we have made in 2019, which will have to be carried forward into 2020. And you see all the different departments that fall within that. Sheriff's office and all the different departments that are under the sheriff. Sheriff's office has the largest single budget, obviously, in the county. And it was breaks down into all the different categories that he had. Next up, we have public works. Biggest change you'll see in public works is I am recommending that we give our public works director and his staff the money, the extra money that he asked for in asphalt and gravel to make sure that he can keep our roads up to par. And I think the extra money that he asked for would be well-spent in making that happen. So, I am recommending that to you. Matter of fact, I have recommended exactly what he asked for in his 2020 budget. And if you've seen them gentlemen work out in this 95-degree heat, I think you will appreciate what they do on a day-to-day budget. Health and welfare. See the proposed budget for each one of those that fall under that particular category. Culture and recreation. See, we're ones that fall under that category as well. I'll go down to the library. We had a meeting with Lumpkin County. And as you know, we're in a regional system, library system with Lumpkin County. And the gist of that meeting was to be uniform in what each county would be providing to the library system. And so, the amount you see there at $425,000 should match what Lumpkin County is going to propose as well in their 2020 budget as well. Next up, we have housing and development. See the departments that fall under that particular category. And the difference in change that's associated with the...
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Under county extension, does that include, I think he was requesting a van to take those students?
I have that accounted.
Okay, very good. I just want to make sure. Thank you. Forage, uh-huh.
And other financing uses. You'll see, you know, we do what's called transfer ends and transfer outs. Whether that be transferred from a particular thing into the general fund or transfer out to something such as grants or family connections, capital projects. These are all transfer outs that we do as part of the general fund. You know, we receive E911 funds, but it doesn't pay for the whole operation. So, we have to balance the rest of that. And same thing in GIS and all the other things there, fleet and fuel. We buy the gas first, and then that goes out to the departments that it's used and things such as adding different parts and stuff that they use as well. And this is just, like I said, a pie chart in reference to the expenditures that matches up with what you just saw. Here's some of the highlights of the budget. As you know, we've voted to make some principal debt payments in the past on a debt that we've had since 1998. All we have been doing was paying interest. Well, I'm proud to say that the board saw that as not using your money very wisely and that we wanted to get out of debt. And so, now, we are actually making some principal payment along with interest payments in an effort to eliminate that debt that we have had forever, since 1998. Also proud to say that if we are lucky enough to sell some property that the board voted in conjunction with Etowah Water, that we'll get part of that debt cleared up, which means that we could save some of this money if we are lucky enough with that property to sell, and hopefully, that it will. Added the contingency fund. As you well know, we have seen time and time again, different things come up, especially I would use the juvenile court as a good example, not knowing how much attorney money they're going to need. And it's just a educated guess. She's been back on numerous occasions before the board, but this contingency allows our county manager to take care of that and allow it taking more time than it needs. $250,000 for attorney fees, and then, of course, a new postage meter for the court house. More highlights. I have proposed to you that we transfer from general fund to the capital improvements fund to be able to purchase some capital items that you will get to make some decisions on as we move forward in 2020. And also, every year, if you remember, we put money in the budget for potential increases in our health insurance that comes due mid-year. We don't usually know what that is, so it's easier to have a little money in the pot to try to offset what that might be. Last couple of years, we've been in pretty good shape and been under the dock line amount that we put in the budget, but we never know what that's going to be. Now, if you remember through the process, we had a lot of personnel requests. I think it was about 52 total that we had. At this time, and we had this discussion, if you remember during the process, you know, obviously, we're in the process of a new salary study in an effort to try to maintain the staff positions that we already had approved. So, the only positions I am recommending to you at this time are the six concession stand workers that are going to make $2,000 apiece that our park director asked for. And I look at that as revenue neutral. He will take all of that money back and then some by taking that operation back in-house. So, you can look at that as revenue profitable, probably, instead of even revenue neutral. But it's the only personnel that I will be recommending to you at this particular time out of the 52 that were requested. And primarily, if you remember, we discussed doing this in a phase, phase-by-phase process. Let's take care of what we had first before we added on to it and make sure that we could stabilize our workforce that we currently have. And then, that doesn't mean that at some point during 2020 that we can't go back and add some personnel because I know there's some that I would like to recommend, and I'm sure there's some that you would like to recommend. If that's your desire, then we could do that in 2020, or we can take a look at it now if that's your desire and think it's that important. But I think it's more important to do it in phases and to try to stabilize our workforce, especially public safety because the public safety, we're kind of drowning. As you know, we gave the increases, and we're still not getting any applications. So, we're still not where we need to be. And so, we've got to address that issue. Matter of fact, I think we may have actually lost a few more people down the road there. All right. So, the total increase of the general funds in the prior year is 10%, 10.26% or $2,787,000. And of course, that's the original budget that we had, that was $27 million and something. Like I said, we have made some changes to that as well. The capital project fund transfers from the general fund, and like I said, we're proposing $250,000 from the general fund to that. Some of the capital projects that I am going to propose to you, $29,000 to have the fleet shop floors coated with epoxy, they're safe. Obviously, if we're going to open a new building, we want it to be safe. We don't want our staff or anyone who would visit that facility to have their vehicle fixed in any form of dangerous. We need a good, solid floor that they can walk on. And so, we didn't have the money in our SPOLOSH to do that. So, I'm proposing that that be done. Ms. Jewett, this goes to the van you spoke of, proposing the money for that. $15,000 of that $33,000 cost will come from the 4/8 fundraiser. So, it's about an $18,000, $10 cost to the county. The other $202,990 for capital projects can be discussed among the board to determine. Obviously, if you remember, Shannon Rockforth, the vehicles that needed to be replaced, I think that was like $224,000 for the priority ones. So, that might be something we want to take a look at. There were air conditioners, and there were other things that were brought before your attention. So, it will be something you just need to make...decide what you want to prioritize throughout the year. Doesn't have to be decided on right off the bat because you'll have to decide how you want to prioritize that going forward. SPOLOSH six will be in our fifth year of this SPOLOSH in 2020. The budget is $7,500,000 for 2020. Those projects and stuff will come before you at a later time, as Mr. McKee has done on an annual basis. He's brought that before the board for you to see what's being proposed to be done with that SPOLOSH funding.
One second.
That's all.
I'm just going to shut everything down for a second.
Technology, good when it works, not when it don't. Reason I always have a paper cup. Otherwise, you wind up lost.
It's not turning.
It's all right. We'll...I'll just go on.
I'll keep working on it.
Using the paper cup. The next slide will be grant transfers. And that basically is all the different grants that our finance department works with throughout the year. It's going to show you a grant award and a county match. And there it is. You can see that the grant awards is $2.5 million, the county match is $1.2. So, that's a pretty good use of county money when you're getting double for what you're spending. And you see the different areas that we get grants in. All right, this is all the funds, proposed budget funds. You know, general funds, obviously, are our biggest budget that we create. But you'll see here that we have several, 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 several funds that finance manages and that we approve. Down there at the bottom, you'll see total for all the funds is $45 million that the county deals with on an annual basis. It's $42 million plus last year, and that's a 6.77% increase over last year. In closing, I'll go back and thanking everybody for all that they've done, all the department heads, the elected officials, the staff, for all their hard work in putting this proposed budget together. Everybody working together makes a success. I'm thanking the board again for all of your participation through the many days that we had hearings that you sent through. And so, I appreciate that. But I also want to especially thank Vicki and Natalie and her staff for all the hard work that they did. This would not be possible without their knowledge and wisdom in helping me put together a proposal to bring before you. I don't know how many man-hours they put into this, but it would be a lot if they put into making this proposal happen before you today. And so, special thank you to all of them for all of the hard work that they put in. We will have some budget, public budget hearing. It will start on October 3rd, I believe it is, at 4:00. And then, we'll have another one at 6:00. Then, we'll have one on the 17th of October as well. So, it will give our general public many opportunities, as well as the board many opportunities to discuss any potential changes that you may want to make to this particular proposal that I would make today. There'll be opportunity for all that would like to speak in reference to the proposed 2020 budget. And I believe we're going to have all of this information online tomorrow for the citizens to look at. They'll see the smaller version here of what I have proposed. And then, you can see the total breakdown in the 44-page document that finance created if you want to really get in-depth into each line-up. So, you'll have that opportunity as well. That is the proposal that I would make to the board for the 2020, and I will answer the questions that you might have at this particular point. Obviously, we're a working property. Anyway, thank you.
I'd like to digest some of it.
I'll lobby.
I'd just like to say thank you because you work very hard. I'm sure you've been looking at a lot of numbers. So, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the county manager report.
Thanks, Chairman and Commissioner. Good afternoon. The key indicator report for the month of August is in your packet. You also have received the latest program work. So, please let me know if you have any questions regarding that. Included in that key indicator report is the contingency expenditures that the chairman just spoke of. Secondly, I'm pleased to report that Saturday, Shore Sweep netted what we believe to be the largest haul of volume year-to-date at the Royal Park collection site. This was not an easy task that staff took on. There were 22,500 pounds of trash equaling about 11.6 tons of debris that was picked up along the shorelines there. And how did they get that? There was a total trash and debris collection included one trailer, loaded four tandem dump trucks, one low-boy trailer containing 52 dock blocks. If you know, those are the big, large blocks that hold docks in place. If you know what those are, the big large blocks that hold docks in place. I would like to thank our county employees who worked the event. We had two facility employees who worked from 8:30 in the morning till 6:00 PM. We had three Public Works employees who worked from 8:00 to 6:00, and two Parks and Rec employees who worked from 8:00 to 12:30 PM. Additionally, numerous pieces of county equipment were utilized, including two road tractors, transfer trailer, low-boy rubber tire loader, skid steer, and Dodge Ram, two tandem dump trucks, and general hand tools. So as you can see, it wasn't a, just picking up trash along shoreline. We also had a nice groundbreaking ceremony for the new fire station eight on Sweetwater June Road early this week. I'd like to thank those who attended, and we look forward to watching progress on the new station. Construction is expected to begin on or around October the 1st and be constructed in eight to 10 months. We will finalize the bulk of the staff work on the salary study next week when department heads and elected officials meet individually with the representatives from Management Advisory Group, the company performing the study. Lastly, we expect to present a revised employee handbook to you all at the next work session on October the 3rd. Staff, and specifically, I'd like to recognize Lisa Green, the HR Director, for the enormous amount of time she's put in evenings and weekends and all, meeting this deadline, and staff that all participated in the development of this document. I think you will find it very inclusive and a good document to work from going forward. And like I said, they've worked tirelessly, tirelessly on this project and is currently under review by council. Legal council does have that document now, and it'll be prepared to the board for their review as well. So we hope to have this available for you on the next work session. And that concludes my report.
Questions of the county manager.
I've got one of the Veterans Memorial Park Maintenance Building addition. I think I saw that in here. What's going on with that?
Richard, the Veterans Memorial Park Maintenance Building, if you recall, when we brought the civil package for the renovations at Veterans Park to reduce some of those culs, we did away with a lot of the cast-in-place concrete wall. It pushed that slip back and required us to demolish the existing maintenance building. So that maintenance building is a new maintenance building. And I will say, the maintenance building was deficient. It was too small. It was in bad shape. So we didn't lose a great building in that. So that maintenance building is just that.
So this is a new building?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is Don still here?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I noticed there were lots of decreases in the people and participation in some things. And what's going on with that?
Our classes are, summer, just a lot of people are, have slacked off taking care of grandkids and stuff like that this summer. Yes, ma'am.
Seasonal.
Yes.
Seasonal slump.
Yeah, I looked at, look at, look at it as well. And our swimming was down a little bit. In the past, we've averaged maybe about 25 Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays, and we averaged about 18 to 20. But we had a lot that had to look after their grandchildren this summer that were not able to get out.
I understand. I was just curious.
Yes, ma'am.
When I say decreases.
On the Shore Sweep, do we send that information to the Corps of Engineers, or doesn't Lanier have a newsletter or something?
What was the question?
The sweep, the sweep we did, we send that information to the?
Yeah, we got a gentleman named Gordon Brand that's been in charge of it for like the last 20 years. And believe me, he has called me continuously this week to get an update, and he'll be presenting that to the Lanier Association to?
Show how much trash we got this coming.
Yes, sir. And we actually sent him. We actually sent a few pictures to Gordon this year regarding the flotation devices that go up under the docks. I mean, they're humongous. Got 52 of them. That's not something we used to get, and we generally get eight to 10. But for some reason, we had a heck of a lot more, but we are in regular communication with them.
Can we send that to the Corps, too?
Sure.
Since they regulate the docks, I mean, if that's somebody repairing a dock, letting that stuff go, the Corps regulates the docks, so they?
Well, the docks, actually, a different story. I actually just asked Matt, we have, we're in the middle of trying to get a grant to get an aluminum pier put back out there, and that's just creeping along real bad. You know, the Corps of Engineers, it's just whenever they get around to it, so we're working on that as well.
And we cleaned up their water for them, so we're moving on faster.
Now, can I wait just a minute? What is this aluminum pier?
We've got the pier that's, this?
You're not talking about this fishing pier, Matt?
That's the same project, yes, ma'am. As he just said, we're just still waiting on the, the grant.
Well, I got a communication. I've still been in touch with David McDonald. He got the support letter done two days.
Wonderful. Okay, I hadn't heard of him. Wonderful.
Well, I, I just aggravated.
Any progress is good. We appreciate it.
I know. I want, I want that fishing pier back, and I'm not going to quit till it's back. So if they won't bring it to me, they're going to have to do something. But anyway, I got it, I got it, matter of fact, while I was in back before I came out here. And I was going to call you up when this is over, okay?
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for the county manager? County Attorney Report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have no public report, but I do have two litigation items for executive session.
All right. So we need to have an executive session. I think a motion to go in executive session. Motion by Mr. Satterfield. Executed by Mr. Fossett. Hearing none, please vote. And that's approved for you to go in executive session. It'll take about five minutes, and then we will meet in executive session. Thank you for your attendance, and we welcome you to come back with us at 6:00 for our voting session. Thank you.